All right, it is 5:30. We'll bring this regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls to order. Our first item on the agenda is to pledge allegiance to the flag. If you please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please note that all members of the city council are present. We will go to the agenda. To the best of my knowledge, there's no additions or deletions. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as read.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Kraus.
I'll second it.
We have a second by councillor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five for the motion, zero against. Next, we go to the minutes of the April 4th meeting, city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So.
We have a motion by councillor Buller. Second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Deech. Let's see which voice I heard on that side.
Yeah.
Can I hear Deech? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the committee of the whole minutes from last meeting, which would be April 11th. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. We have a motion by councillor Kraus. Do we have a second? We have a second by councillor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five for the motion, zero against. Next, we go to the accounts payable. We have a resolution for approving the transfers, payments of claims and accounts payable. Going to the 401 permanent improvement is $66,666.66. That's coming equally out of the 401 or from the 401 water and the the 601 water and the 603 sewer in the amount of $33,333.33 respectively. Going to the 403 reserve for capital outlay is going to be $25,760.42. That's coming from the 601 water in the amount of $19,136.17 and the 603 sewer in the amount of $6,624.25 for a total transfers of $92,427.8. Accounts payable, City of International Falls claims $568,789.30. Airport commission claims of $3,221.8 and library board claims of $7,599.55 for a total accounts payable or claims of $579,609.93. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution for the payments and claims.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Kraus. Do we have a second? Second. We have a second by councillor Buller. Any discussion? I just wanted to let you guys know you can motion and second across me. You don't have to just stick to your own sides. Just for future reference. We'll call the question.
Aye.
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 Wow, I didn't mean to wreck it. I'll vote yes too. Motion carries five zero. Wow, okay, well, now we'll move on. I just wanted to let you guys know, it just seemed like we might have been missing something there. We'll go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything forward to the council that's not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on. There will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. We'll go to the consent agenda. We have two items. One is to approve or allow necessary expenses for four Public Works employees to attend the Northeast Minnesota pruning workshop at the University of Minnesota Duluth, April 28th, 2022, and approve hiring of summer employees for Public Works administration housing as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Buller. We have a second by councillor Holden. Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero.
Was that better?
That was so well. That was really good, guys. I'm very proud of us. We're moving together. We're working together as a council. All right, first item on our agenda under new business is a Voyagers National Park update. Superintendent Bob Gross.
In the folder is a lot of just informational documents. Have a few extra ones here. Thank you for allowing me time on your agenda. The first thing I would like to say is just thank you to Ted Brokaw and the crew that maintain our facility over at the headquarters and everything. Everything is going very well over there in terms of snow removal and different things like that. And the building always looks very good, so I appreciate all the attention that they give us over there and everything. So the main thing that I'm doing is going around to the different councils and boards of the various gateway communities to the park. Typically, I do this in the fall of the year and in the spring of the year, just to give a little bit of an update. And this spring, one of the biggest things I want to inform people of is the change of operations at the Kettle Falls portage in light of Rainy Lake being identified as infested with zebra mussels. And in an effort to mitigate and prevent further spread of zebra mussels upward in the watershed, one of the things that we're going to be doing at Kettle Falls is requiring all vessels going from Rainy Lake up to Nammakin Lake be decontaminated with high-pressure water and heated water in an effort to kill any little zebra mussel villagers or larvae from moving from one lake to another. Another thing that boaters should be mindful of is if they do have any fish caught, they would have to transport those fish on ice from one lake to another. And also, all water in the live well and bait well in the bilges will be drained. So if anybody's wanting to take bait from one lake to another, they would have to prepare for that and figure out how they want to transport that bait and everything. So just letting people know that there'll be changes at Kettle Falls in an attempt to prevent zebra mussels from moving up the watershed and everything. Only boats going from Rainy to Nammakin will have to be decontaminated. Boats going from Nammakin down to Rainy will not have to be decontaminated, but they will have to drain their waters from their holds and things like that. That's just a state regulation or a state guideline for AIS aquatic invasive species to prevent transport of anything. So that was the biggest thing I just wanted people to be aware of, because there are going to be changes out there. And if you are a boater that does utilize the portage, you should expect delays, especially if you're going from Rainy up to Nammakin, because the process of decontamination is about 30 minutes or so. Any questions about that at all? The other big thing I wanted to share with everyone is that we are getting a new vessel for the Nammakin Basin of the park, which is down, it will be in the marina down at the Cab Togoma Visitor Center. It's called the Nijodane. And on Thursday, June 9th, we are going to be having a naming ceremony for that new vessel and also be taking people from the cab visitor center over to the Ellsworth Rock Garden. So if any of you are available on June 9th, we'll have more details coming out. We're just sort of figuring out what the day is going to look like here. And hopefully by about early May to mid-May, we'll be doing more messaging and everything, so.
June 9th, will the ice be out by then?
Well, that's a good question. Yeah.
Because I was listening to the conversation before.
Yeah, Cab Togoma thankfully opens up typically before Rainy does. And of course, Rainy is called open once you can travel from International Falls to Kettle Falls and everything. So hopefully Cab Togoma will be open, so, yeah. But again, there's other information in your packet there. Some information about some of the work that we're doing in relation to the wetland restoration or the hybridized cattail removal project. We're going to be doing work in Cranberry Bay and in the bay around the Rainy Lake Visitor Center again. And then there's some information in there too about the camping reservation trends and the houseboat permit trends. And we saw about a 40% increase plus from 2019 to 2020. And that continued in 2021. And the way the reservation system is looking right now is that we're on trend to either match or exceed the visitation for overnight use through camping and houseboat reservations that we saw in 2021, so. Yeah.
That was, that was actually the question I was going to ask is the plans for tourism this year. I noticed last year, a lot of the people that were traveling up here, now that we're dark sky compliant, were coming up to see the northern lights, to see the stars in the park. Is that a trend that you expect to continue to grow even now that the Canadian border is open?
Yeah, I hope that we see a bump from that for at least a three-year period or so. And actually, I was just talking to some of the people in the audience. I heard something the other day that scientists predict that the northern lights are going to be very active over the next three to five years. And we're often recognized Voyagers National Park and International Falls area as being one of the best places in the lower 48 states to see northern lights. So I'm hoping that that continues a trend to, for more visitors coming to the area and everything, so.
Excellent. Any other questions?
No. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Is there a fee for decontamination?
There's not going to be a fee for decontamination at all. It's just going to be the portage fee, which I believe, I don't want to, I should have gotten that number, but it hasn't changed too much. The availability of the decontamination is going to be dependent upon staffing though, and I'm hoping to do more messaging in early May, once we have a better idea of the amount of staff that we have. But the hours of portage might be limited because of staffing. But we'll definitely try to get that word out to everyone so that they know what to expect, so. Yep. Thank you for your time. Yep.
All right, next we'll go to a mayoral proclamation proclaiming May as Mental Health Month. Chair would entertain a motion to make that proclamation.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Kraus. We have a second by councillor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have a resolution approving the State of Minnesota Joint Powers Agreement with the City of International Falls on behalf of its city attorney and its police department. City administrator, can you just give a quick background on this one?
I apologize. I don't have a lot of background on it. The city attorney, I know in the past has done this annually in conjunction with working with our police department. Mike was out today as well, so he was not able to attend. But this comes through our city attorney's office on behalf of our law enforcement center.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion for that joint powers agreement.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Buller. Do we have a second by councillor Holden? Discussion? Hearing no, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we go to authorize the police department to use Smokey Bear Park for national night out activities from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM on Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that request.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by councillor Holden. We have a second by councillor Kraus. Discussion? If you haven't attended this, you really should. It is a wonderful, wonderful evening. And it started years ago, not too many years ago. I mean, I remember when it started, but it's, it's a great activities with, with the police, the sheriff's department, lots of community vendors, all kinds of, of groups are there and it's a wonderful opportunity to meet our police, meet people in your community and at least last year dunked the mayor in a dunk tank. So we'll move on and we have a motion and a second. I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, consider a transfer agreement with Widseth for use of electronic media. Betty, can you just give us a quick rundown of why we're doing this for the projects that we've had?
Yep, we sure, I sure can. Thank you. As we had, we're in the process of transitioning from Widseth to Boltland Mink. We had went through a list of projects that they were working on. They were going to continue to work on or had stopped working on. There was three different phases. And the first phase, we asked them to provide us documentation on the certain projects. We paid for the final of them. And as Public Works and the engineers reviewed those, then they now sent in the second request as outlined on page two and three, the next group of projects that they would like final and sent to us. So on there you can see are the claims that we will be paying for those and asking Widseth to release those, the rest of those documents to us at that time.
So just, just a question. Are, so are these finalized through Widseth? Or are these somewhere in the completion process and Boltin Mink would take over?
I believe they're in the middle of projects. I'm going to ask Ted to verify most of that information, but he can add to that.
Ted, if you are, you have to come up front.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Some of the projects are closed out. They're as-built for some jobs that were closed out. Local Roads 2020. Some of them are survey data for future projects and some are for some projects that will be going forward. So it's, it's a mishmash of projects.
Okay, fantastic. Any other questions on that before, and I'll take, I'll accept a motion to consider the transfer agreement?
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Holden? Any other questions? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Thanks, Ted.
Stay there.
Next, we have a resolution requesting encumbering funds for municipal state aid street projects. Second Avenue West from Fourth Street to Seventh Street and Seventh Street from Second Avenue to Second Avenue West to Third Avenue West. Public Works Director Brokaw.
Yes, Mayor. So this is something we had started talking about when we started to put in the, as the sales tax came in, is the one thing the city's never done is borrowed ahead on our annual allotment for MSA. And so what we would do is actually save up for projects when we average about $380,000 a year in MSA funds. Basically, what we're doing is, is to be able to pull out these bigger projects. You're allowed to encumber up to five years of your annual allotment as long as there is money in the MSA fund. And for this project, which is a rather big project, is there is money available for us to borrow ahead two and a half, three years to be able to pull that project off in 2023. So there's a deadline for us to, so basically we'll be able to get 95% of that money forward to be able to pull the project off early.
So just to clarify that for anyone that's listening or reading about it in the newspaper, borrowing ahead, we're not actually borrowing money. We're, we're receiving monies that is allotted for state aid roads in advance. And then instead of waiting for the money to come next year and the year after it and the year after that, we're just getting the money in one lump sum and not requesting the money in the future.
Exactly. And as long as there's a balance in the MSA fund allows you to do that, 2021, we were not allowed to do that because everybody encumbered. Okay, there's, there's some of the belief at the, you know, originally it was, we don't encumber, we save. Okay, some cities encumber five years all the time. Okay, and what they, what they figure is by being able to pull that project off early, you're saving on the increases from one year to the next, which we're, we are honest to actually seeing now that, you know, projects are costing a lot more money. So if we can do the project earlier and build that account back up. So it's, we encumbered almost a year's worth for Highway 53 on the street lighting side of it. So this is, this would be the second time, but this is the biggest chunk. We did part of Highway 53, we did encumber part of our money for the electrical.
And at one point, when we were doing the 53 project, the game plan was to encumber all five years to do the 53 project. That was a plan that the council was looking at and we ended up not doing that. So this is our second go-around at using the encumbering as a, as a funding vessel for our project.
And the biggest thing was that weren't the encumbering funds available that everybody was encumbering? The, the ultimate goal was, was to encumber five years with the plan of having that balance at zero when they do 1171 from Menards basically to Second Street or Second Avenue, which is now is pushed off to 1171 at least. So that is our goal so that we don't, our cost share is going to be big on this, on the west end of town as it was on the east end. So the ultimate goal is to be able to encumber again for 1171.
What year did you say 1171?
It started out as 25, then it was 26, now it's pushed out to 2027. Originally, it was from Sixth Avenue heading west and now they've pushed it to Second Avenue. So it's turning out to be a lot bigger project. So basically, we'll get Highway 53 done this year with the beautification and then we've got to start it all over again with the beautification, the design and everything of 1171. Be prepared, you know, they're already talking about going on a road diet, which means, you know, we're five lanes. So they like to shrink down the lanes and the stoplights. You know, they're going to do the traffic count again. Remember how we, you know, we went through with the, with the idea of losing the Seventh Street stoplight? At one point, we were going to lose 11th Street and 17th. So we've got to start that all over again, so.
All right, so the resolution we have before us is requesting to encumber funds for municipal state aid projects. Second Avenue West from Fourth Street to Seventh Street and Seventh Street from Second Avenue West to Third Avenue West. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second by councillor Buller? Any questions? I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Go ahead and stick around. Public Works Director Brokaw. Our next item on our agenda is Public Works Committee recommendations, the purchase of a single plow truck. Well, actually just do both of them and the purchase of a Larue D50 loader-mounted snow blower. Give us background on those two.
So the issue right now, we have, we have a dump, tandem axle dump truck that is in very bad shape, engine-wise. We need to replace it. And we, the sander body that is in our tandem plow truck right now needs to be replaced. The one thing about it is the single axle plow truck that we bought last year that does the liquid application, it does such a better job than the tandem. I'm recommending that we buy another single axle plow truck with the liquid application. Pull the plow body off of the tandem, which is going to give us the tandem dump truck that we need, rather than buying a regular tandem dump truck and upgrading the sander body. The biggest problem I'm seeing right now is the plow bodies, everything's going up. The Towmaster truck body right now is going to go up about 10% May 1st. So that's why I'm doing it now. Same thing with the Larue loader mount. The price of metal and everything is going through the roof. So we're saving considerable amount of money. We're going to still have a tandem truck for hauling snow, plus we're going to have a better plow to be able to do a better job on the roads. I want to give a shout out to the plowing crew that we had this year. They did a phenomenal job, especially with the amount of snow we had. I don't know if anybody noticed, but our mains were down to blacktop most of the winter, which normally does not happen. And that is because of the liquid application we were able to use from the new plow truck that we had. You know, the famous thing is to get called at 10 o'clock at night when it's 20 below out to send the sander out. It's, we're giving everybody the warm and fuzzy feeling because when it's that cold, the salt and the sand doesn't work. It's basically, we put it out there and you watch it blow off the roads. Where when you're applying liquid to the salt or the sand, it's allowed to stick and it's actually allowed to do its job. The one thing is that you're going to see a reduction in the amount of sand and salt we use based on the trucks that we're using now. And we're doing a better job. It's making the road safer. And I'm really proud of the guys with the new equipment and the new processes. In 20, next winter, you're going to see us actually go out in pre-wet roads before it snows. We could have done that this year, but with the liquid application with the sander, we decided to opt for too much change. So you're actually going to see somebody applying chemical to the road before it snows, so the snow doesn't have a chance to stick. Which rolls into the the snow blower. I don't know if anybody's ever heard of the International Falls roundabouts, but.
Semi-familiar. I've been on social media.
And the issue with it is, we end up having to handle that snow five, six, seven times before we actually get it to the snow dump. Whereas with the snow blower, we wing it to the middle of the road and we blow it in a dump truck and we haul it away. Right now, we windrow it to the middle of the road. Then we have two to three loaders that pile it up and push it a block at a time. And we can't get it done in one night. Now, I'm not guaranteeing you the first few times it snows, we're going to get it all done in one night, because I think in my letter, I did throw the disclaimers once we have a process, but it's going to be quicker and it's going to do a better job. We've, we've actually, we've looked, last October, we went to the MinDOT Truck Show in St. Cloud, looked at different snow blowers. This spring, we went, spring, it's still winter, isn't it?
It's second winter.
When it looked like it was spring, we went to the City of Bemidji, looked at their two different types of snow blowers, plus we went to the county and looked at theirs, decided a little bit smaller unit than what the City of Bemidji is using, but it's the same model as the Larue. About the only difference between the county one and the one we're looking at is we actually added the reversing feature for wet snow like we've had lately is they do have a tendency sometimes when it's wet to plug. And the county did not have the reversing feature on theirs, so you actually have to get in there and dig it out. Whereas the reversing feature, you can turn the auger the other way and it pushes it back out, so. But other than that, it's about the same unit. Very impressed and very thankful for the help Bemidji gave us, showing us how to use it and whatnot. It's Bluetooth. You can start the snow blower up and everything was 20 feet away. The guy just pushes a button and it fires up, does all the controls. It was a very impressive piece of equipment. And you can fill a dump truck up in about 15 seconds.
I like the safety end of it. I watched Grand Rapids do that for quite a few years and they have their dump trucks lined up and you got your big snow blower blowing into it. There's none of those loaders backing up, looking for cars all the time. They, they really stretch their necks out, looking for vehicles all the time.
Yeah.
The snow blower, it'll be a safety, really good safe.
Yes.
And both of these items are state bid?
Yep.
And the state bid changes on the first, that's the.
Right, the Mack truck changes in July. The Larue and the truck body for the plow truck, May 1st or in April is the end of their contract, so.
So unless the council has an issue with it, we could take both of these together by motion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by councillor Buller.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Holden. Just to clarify, that was for both pieces of equipment?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Thanks a lot.
Public Works Director Brokaw. He said that blower was available soon. They have it on hand. That's the one.
Right now, they're talking this fall, but. Right now they're talking this fall, but
Okay, yeah.
The way things are going.
Promises or not promises anymore.
But actually the, the, if we get in now, we should be able to see it just December is what, what we're shooting for. Now, the single axle plow truck is going to be a twenty-twenty-three delivery. That's, that's about the best we can get out of them right now, um due to the fact that some of the shortages have really, really messed up.
And Mack is doing military.
Right now they are. I know we're number twelve on the list. I know it took me a little while. I would have had this last, a month ago, I think was one, two months ago, we brought it up at the Public Works meeting. But he had forty-two customers he had to call up that were supposed to get trucks in twenty-twenty-two that aren't getting them now because of the, the switch. So in the, in the short just supplies. So it's, you know, we're, we're supposed to buy pickups and I can't even get prices on pickups. So things aren't good. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we go to the Committee of the Whole recommendations. We had uh one uh, one recommendation come out of that and that was the wages for senior uh for um summer, summer seasonal employees. Uh, we have the hourly rate for twenty-twenty-two seasonal employees increased from twelve dollars in twenty-twenty-one to fifteen dollars for the first hour or for per hour for the first year summer employees, uh thirteen for second year and to now sixteen. And it was thirteen seventy-five for third year and now it's sixteen seventy-five for third year. And that's in the resolution. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
They have a motion by Council Holden.
Second.
We have a second by Council Buller. And any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Can we just make sure that we point out that these seasonal jobs are not just for college students, that these seasonal jobs are for anybody seventeen and older looking for a, and it's just a seasonal, it's a temporary position on the summer crew. So it used to be for college students only, but this is for anybody looking for a temporary job with the city in the summer. I just wanted to make sure that that was out there.
And as a follow-up, I believe today was the day that we closed or Friday was the day that we were closing. We were going to extend that out till this Friday?
That is correct. Yeah.
Publication deadline is next Friday or this, this coming Friday, right?
This, this Friday, the twenty-second.
So we did, we did earlier today approve a, a list of names, but it's still open. So if uh anybody else wants to apply now that uh we're, we're shifting our pay fee or our pay schedule, um we want to make sure that that's still open to folks now that, you know, it's been changed. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next we go to uh consider a lease agreement with the uh Convention and Visitors Bureau. You guys want to come on up? Betty, do you want to just give some background on this while, while they come up?
Sure. Yep. The city council um back in March had, had the discussion with the chambers dissolution and different things on with the CDB was a tenant of theirs moving forward with them, talking to them in regards to um what their, their thought process was of staying in the building or not. So I had met with Mike, Mike had phoned me, he had met with his executive board and we had tentatively looked at you know, changing up the lease a little bit, allowing like for a five-year term um and going forward from there and then allowing them to sublet, you know, possibly if there was some, somebody else and with the chamber possibly changing now again back to them. Um, but in conversation previously with the city council, it was talked about of getting out of renting or leasing our properties. And so, you know, Mike and I had had that discussion, so I wanted to make sure you guys, you know, understood that these guys have come to us with a five-year you know, a plan, agree, you know, and asking for five years, the same as what we had already approved with the chamber. Um, so that's kind of where we, where we sit with it.
Okay, thank you. I'll hand it off to you guys then.
I really have nothing to add. We're asking for the same lease that the chamber had.
Okay.
Um, the only difference is the flip flop of names.
Okay. Uh, council, please.
Is it really important that you have a five-year lease?
It shows stability.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I don't think we want to come back here in eight months and do this again or six months or whatever the case may be. Um, so I think it shows some stability. I mean, we see quite a few people come through that door uh every year. I think the total is between four and five thousand people and I have no idea where they would go if that didn't happen. So I, yes, I think it's important.
Okay. Just a question I had, thank you.
And, and at, at one point we had offered the, the chamber, the um, the building for a dollar just so that we can get out of the rental game, which I think is what we, we've all had that discussion about. Um, and since the chamber has uh, has moved out or um terminated their, their lease, we've been called by lots of nonprofits that want to move into that facility. So now it's a question on what to do with the building and, and I, I really don't know. I, I mean, we want to make sure that you guys have a place to be because that's important to me. That's important to, I believe, the council. But I also know that we want to get out, out of renting the building and doing all the maintenance on the building for no income. So I think that's kind of the question that we have moving forward.
I think the question the council has to ask is what nonprofit provides the services to the community or would replace those services that we provide? We meaning the CBB and the chamber. My guess is the chamber is probably going to be rebirthed, if you will, um, which is a good thing. Um, so who else would answer those questions? What, when the visitor walks in the door that's from Chicago or wherever, who's going to answer those questions? This community is no longer just a fishing, a couple of guys going fishing. They bring families. They want events, they want activities, they want to see what's downtown, they want to send people to shop. Who's going to do that? Could we go someplace else? We've looked at other places. I don't know that anybody would drive to Bacchus to see a visitor center. Who would do that?
I, I too think that the location has to be where they're at. That can't change one, one bit. I mean, that, that's just a super location for everybody. I mean, I agree with that.
One more thing. If you look at the finances, I think the International Falls portion of the taxes collected for, for the lodging operators is about a hundred thousand dollars a year. Out of that money, you get five percent every year. So it's not like you're giving the building for free. You are getting something for it. Not only does International Falls do that, but so does the county and so does the city of Rainier. Each one gets five percent. Now, obviously that's based on occupancy, excuse me, but that hundred thousand dollars is based on about a ten-year looking ten years back. Now you got two brand new hotels coming in and I think they got about eighty-five rooms in each one. So that, I assume would go up.
But those numbers would go up whether you were in that building or not.
They would, but you still wouldn't have the service. You still wouldn't have somebody, you still wouldn't have somebody answering the questions.
Understood. Please.
For clarification, that five percent, the city does not retain. That five percent then goes out to Project Pride in its entirety for the beautification of downtown, the planting, the plants, the um hanging baskets and things. So it's not retained, you know, completely with the city. We do twice a year send that complete whole five percent to Project Pride.
But you spend it how you spend it. Still your money.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Well, I think it's important that they get back in there and they stay in there. Um, they're promoting the town, the city. This town needs promotion and you can't be relaxed on that. And so I'm a hundred percent behind them getting back in there and having a good lease agreement. So.
Thank you.
I would agree with that. Prime location. They wouldn't find a better location. This is ideal.
Well, I have, I, I agree. Please. Anything else?
I, I'm on board.
Yeah. The only, the only issue that I have i- is the city does all the maintenance on that bill or on the, the parking lot, the city's doing all of the uh upkeep on the building. The issue is we're not getting any income from, from rent on it, but we're putting all the maintenance into the property. That's why we wanted to get out of the rental game. The goal was to sell the property, whether it was to the chamber, to the CBB, to another organization. And that, that's my issue. I think just my personal belief, I want them to be in it. But I think that if we looked at a eight-month lease, get us to the first of the year, we can work with them to either purchase the building, come up with a longer-term lease, but it, it's still on the taxpayers to do all the maintenance on that building for the nonprofit.
They don't read that in here. They're responsible for the maintenance right here.
I think uh, uh council member that we are responsible for the small items, furnace filters and stuff like that. But I mean, if uh, you know, the roof blows off, obviously our budget's about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. There's absolutely no way we can do that. And in regards to purchasing the building, by law, the CBB cannot do that. That's out of the question. We can't.
Okay. Well, that's a no-brainer.
So then, so then
Get you back in there. You're a valuable source to this community and I don't know where it got started that, that that wasn't it. I mean, but I'm all for you guys being there and making this town better. The whole thing is to make I Falls better.
Agree.
So one clarification on that, Mike, it's the community. They're working with Rainier and it's the whole community in promoting, not just I Falls.
I know.
And that's, that's good. I mean, it's
That is good.
And what's good for one is good for the other, right?
I do want to clarify one thing. When I said that we can't purchase a building by law, that's a fact. That said, if another entity came in to purchase the building and not, building on our behalf, so to speak, that would be a possibility. I know of no other CBB that operates like that. They are housed with the chamber. And the CBB, that, those dollars, tax dollars are dedicated for one thing, ninety-five percent, one thing, and that's tourism.
Tourism, one hundred percent.
I think we need to, what would help solidify this a little more would be if the chamber were back in operation. I think that would clarify a lot of the questions we're answering and that we're asking. I think uh I'd like to see him go with a more than a, more than a one-year lease for sure, but just see what, what can develop with uh everything, you know? I mean, we, I think it's in here if I read it right, that either one can opt out at any time with
Within a thirty-day notice. And I think that's what the chamber did when they exercised that, right?
So I think, yeah, five years. I'm, I'm for five years, yes.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion that we lease it to them for five years. As the lease agreement is right here.
Okay, we have a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please.
Mr. Mayor, I I think the spirit of, of divesting, if you will, in some of the properties that the city owns, I, I think our, I think our intentions were to, to get out of, out from under some of the properties that we own, but I, I don't think that in this particular instance it makes sense. This is, this is the CBB. This is, it's, it's a little different. Now the, the game, this, this has changed. This is not, this is not where we were. Um, this has changed. And uh, and given the circumstances and given the change, I think we need to ride this out and see where that, I mean, there's, there's talk of revitalizing the, the chamber. It's going to look different. We don't know. There's nothing set in stone. We don't know. What we do know is that the CBB is still here. They're still operating. They're still doing, we, we do know that we have the two new, two new hotels opening. We do know that the world is coming out of a pandemic. We do know that the border restrictions have been lifted. We do know that tourism is going to be different. We do know that at some point this winter is going to end. There's a, I sure hope so. So, and you know, and we do know that as um Superintendent Degross pointed out, that the Northern Lights are only going to get better. And I mean, there, there's a lot of stuff going on, right? So I think in this instance, our, our intentions on, on this council and previous councils were to divest and to spend our money in other places, but I think this is a, this is a noble place to spend some money on an upkeep of a building and a, a parking lot and promote, this is that, this is that city promotion. This is that spot. Mike was, or Council Holden was talking about it uh when, when uh the chamber was in here talking about their dissolution. This, this is a spot, right? This is, this is that spot. This is our opportunity, if not, if not through a contract, if through maintenance to promote the city. This is, this is where we're spending our money. So I'm, I'm all for this. This is, this is, this is where we need to put our money.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I would agree. We've got to bite the bullet sometime on some of our properties and this is the one.
Uh, and I, I would just say, I, I agree with everything that's been said at this, this table. Number one, I think it is the perfect spot for you guys. I, I agree with that. I agree with, you know, the fact that International Falls is the hub for Koochin County based off Voyager's National Park being there. Uh, we're the largest uh population of the area. We have the most housing, uh, wrong word. We have the most uh hotels. Well, we have the most housing too, uh lodging. It, it, it just concerns me slightly that the city ends up paying all of the bills on our facilities that, I don't want to say the facilities. We're, we're cleaning the parking lots for different organizations because it's the city's parking lot and it benefits not necessarily the residents, it benefits other things. I think that fantastically what you guys are doing is great. I think the promotion of the area is amazing and it's working. I, I see our stuff down in the cities at the airport. I see it uh in other places and I, I think that our CBB is doing absolutely wonderful. I, I just, it always concerns me when, when our, our public works, when our, our maintenance is being put away from the streets and the roads and the sewers to do parking lots and stuff for other people and our uh, our, our monies goes to buildings that we're trying to get out from underneath. So I, I do respect everything you guys are doing. I think that uh the CBB is going to be a great tenant. So we have a motion and a second for a five-year lease as uh, as presented. Chair would entertain or chair would call the question.
Aye.
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 You were really loud, Leon. I'll, I'll vote yes as well. I'll vote yes as well.
Thank you. I have, I have one more thing. I just wanted to let you know. I don't know if you saw the press release yet from the chamber. They're calling an all-membership meeting on the, on April twenty-sixth at five fifteen. I think it's in I space at, at Balance, but I just want to let you know. There are two members of the CBB that are on that task force. I got to tell you, the energy in that room.
Good to hear. Good to hear. Thank you.
Just wanted to let you know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have a um approval for a three-year labor agreement between the city of International Falls and the IAMAW District Lodge Five Woodworkers Local W thirty-three IAMAW for the International Falls Police Department, January first, twenty-twenty-two through uh December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that labor agreement.
So move.
Oh, I'm going to give it to Council Kraus. We have a motion by Council Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Council Deech. Any uh discussion? I would, I would just say one of the things I'd like to do in the future, and we're talking three years out, I would really like to come up with a, a, a policy, not even a policy, just a a moment where the council can all meet together just to have a discussion on the uh, on the um agreements before it comes to council, just so we can have some frank conversation about the changes. But I do respect uh the words from Council Deech and Council Holden from the last meeting that we have to respect what the committees come up with and bring to the table. So I'm not going to put a fight out on this one. Um, I did that on the last one. But uh I do think that it just makes sense for the whole council to understand what's in the paperwork, but um we will um adhere to the groups that uh negotiated on our behalf and will bring it forward. But in the future, I'd really like to, we're talking three years from now. Really like to have that conversation in uh, in committee so we can have a frank conversation about the changes in the contract. So uh we have a motion and a second. I will call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries. And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, approve a three-year labor agreement between the City of International Falls and the District Lodge Five and its affiliate woodworkers, local lodge W thirty-three of the International Association of Machinas and Aerospace Workers. I didn't even know we had aerospace workers in the city. Uh, for the City of International Falls, firefighter engineers and paramedics, January first, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden.
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Deech. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
I think we owe a big thanks to Sherry, our HR person, and Betty, our city administrator. They put many long hours and nights in on this.
All right. I, I would agree with that. I, uh, I sat in on a handful of the negotiations. Um, um, I think I only sat in on one for the police officers, but with that being said, I know that there was lots of hours and um, I think two full days, is that accurate, from AM to PM? At least two full days?
Well, with all hours together, there was numerous hours, period.
Fair enough. Uh, anything else? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have a resolution approving the MinDOT Agency Agreement for the Federal Airport Expenditures Reimbursement. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
So move.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden. Do we have a second? We have a motion by Councillor Buller.
Yes, with your name tags here, man.
Things happen. It's the cross-contamination of the, the stuff. We should never have changed it. We have a motion by Councillor Walt Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by, see, I was just mixed up, by Councillor Holden. I apologize. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. You took that one way easier than the time that I tried to do, uh, Buller. All right, next, we have a resolution approving an application to conduct off-site gambling for the Rainier Recreation Club on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, at the Falls High School gym. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden, the real one. We have a, a second by Councillor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to any other business? Hearing none, we'll go to the city administrator.
Um, Mayor Council, thank you. Nothing specific, um, just that we've got a lot going on. You know, we're still working just about daily on Cary Park items that come up, uh, working with. I received a petition for an improvement, on a street improvement from a resident today, so we'll be working through that process. Working with, uh, the NFIP as soon as we get the new maps, and you know, you'll have that in front of you shortly, so a lot of things going on behind the scenes that, you know, eventually will be coming across your table.
Um, any department heads? Ted, do you have anything to bring forward? City engineer, do you have anything to bring forward? All right, you have your police report in your packet and the fire and rescue report, uh, reports to the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions. Um, so I just want to say, we did have a four-thirty meeting today. Uh, it ended up being canceled. I received a phone call from the city administrator and Councillor Buller that, uh, the city attorney would not be able to attend. The goal of the meeting that we had this, this afternoon was to address, uh, the workload that the city attorney has and the trans, uh, the, um, transfer of, uh, city attorney, he is going to be done at the end of this year. So the city is officially looking for a city attorney, and we wanted to have that conversation of his workload earlier today. But with him, uh, being out of the area and not being able to attend, it, uh, didn't really make for, um, a good conversation piece with the city attorney. Um, so at this time, we are going to reschedule that meeting. Um, that will be happening, um, sooner than later. Uh, the city administrator is going to see if we can't set up a meeting with the city, uh, attorney for, for that purpose. Secondly, um, without putting out an RS or a, what's the word?
RFP.
RFP, um, we are looking for a city attorney. We, we're going to be working on that, uh, RFP relatively, uh, quickly and putting that out. But, uh, um, as the mayor of International Falls, I, I am saying that there will be a new city attorney. Um, if not January first, twenty twenty-three, someone that could be hired on with the city uh, before that to help assist and do the transfer between now and then. Um, I don't know if it, it makes sense for us to come up with an RFP right now. Uh, because we haven't had the discussion. We were going to have that today of what would make the sen- make sense, but, uh, there's a couple of options that we have. We could have a attorney do our criminal work uh, as, um, our city attorney does right now, and have somebody else do our civil work, which our city attorney does right now. We have an opportunity right now to kind of switch the way we do stuff, and we'd like to have that conversation with the city attorney, with the city council. And, uh, I just, I just wanted to be clear on why we, we missed that meeting earlier today. And that, uh, if you're interested and you're a attorney, just look, there's going to be an opportunity here in International Falls very soon. Um, as for anything else on my, uh, my plate, I, um, did see that they have, uh, had a legislative update yesterday. I read through it, um, the bonding. Uh, it looks like there will be a bonding bill, however, I can't tell you one way or another if we're in it. With the, um, with the surplus at the state level, it does sound like there's a possibility that LGA goes up. That would be a boost for the city. Um, we're one of the highest, uh, um, we get the most money out of LGA in the state, so, uh, just wanted to let you guys know that that's an opportunity. With that being said, I don't have anything else, any other quarters or commissions? We'll have one more opportunity for, um, audience. Hearing none, in, for correspondence, you have the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Drought Warning, uh, information from April thirteenth. And our next, uh, city council meeting will be May second, twenty twenty-two, and am I correct that you will not be in attendance?
Next time.
Next meeting?
No, I will be, if it's May second?
May second.
Yeah, I'm leaving the second week in May.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be there.
I will be here, I'll be back.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, because I had heard in the Committee of the Whole, who was getting ready to take a little bit of much needed time.
Week later now, so.
Yeah, and you retired, guys. I mean, it's hard to get time off, so I get it. All right, so we have, uh, so we have, we're expecting a full council next meeting. With that being said, uh, this meeting is adjourned.